You have successfully joined the webcast. Please stand by, the meeting will begin shortly. You have successfully joined the webcast. Please stand by, the meeting will begin shortly. You have successfully joined the webcast. Please stand by, the meeting will begin shortly. You have successfully joined the webcast. Please stand by, the meeting will begin shortly. You have successfully joined the webcast. Please stand by, the meeting will begin shortly. You have successfully joined the webcast. Please stand by, the meeting will begin shortly. You have successfully joined the webcast. Please stand by, the meeting will begin shortly.
Okay, welcome to the Village of Wapungus Falls Monthly Record Meeting and the Mayor and the Board of Trustees. It's Wednesday, October 8th. May you please stand for the pledge.
Hello, Mr. Ian. How are you?
I have one announcement that the Veterans Day held every year. The 11th hour, the 11th day, the 11th month, that'll be November, will be held at the VFW post. During Monday night's meeting at the American Legion, we agreed that we would join them and have it up there for safety purposes. It's very noisy up on Route 9, as you all know if you've attended it. They have a loudspeaker system there. It's safe, it's off the main road. In today's world, people driving off the road and hitting crowds and things like that. We decided for safety reasons, we would have it up at their post. Okay? That's the announcement. Okay, roll call. Mayor Huber.
President.
Trustee McCormick. Trustee Semento.
Here.
Trustee Mosh.
Here.
Trustee Marshall. Absent. Trustee Vanke.
Yeah.
Trustee Smith.
Here.
Village Attorney Lindars.
Here.
Action on minutes. Special Village Board Meeting Minutes, September 2nd.
You get a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Regular Village Board Meeting, September 10th.
You get a motion?
Make the motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both? Carried.
Second Monthly Village Board Meeting Minutes, September 24th.
You get a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both?
Authorization to pay bills as per approved warrants.
Can you get a motion?
Are there any issues this time?
No, I'll make the motion.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We'd like to amend the regular scheduled agenda to allow for a presentation that Village Treasurer Greg has arranged. Could you want to explain that?
Yes, so I would like to present Rob Bataglia from ClearGov. ClearGov is a software that will help us in our budget process. I think it's worth taking a little bit of time to see what the product has to offer as it adds to the admin stack that we're already using to provide additional transparency to both the public and internally to department heads while we're building up the budget for fiscal 2027. So, Rob.
I went out of order. Can I have a motion to amend the agenda?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both?
Well, thank you. As Greg said, my name is Rob Bataglia. I am a Senior Solutions Advisor for ClearGov. For those who might not be familiar with our company, we are the leading budget software and financial reporting software company for local governments across the country. We're currently working with over 1,400 different local government entities across the United States. In New York State, we're working with almost 60 or 70 different local governments. Some communities nearby include the city of Poughkeepsie, city of Newburgh, Runseer County, Orange County, Putnam County, the town of Milton, handful of villages across New York State. A couple that I saw earlier today in Westchester County, like Pelham and Tarrytown, Sleepy Hollow. And really just want to underscore that all of our software is built for local government. Our technologies are for communities like Wapungus Falls. It's for villages, cities, towns, school districts, counties. This isn't complicated software that's for the private sector that's been adapted for local governments for a staff in a community just like yours. And talking with Greg, it sounds like the village's current budget process pretty much relies on data being built and manipulated in Excel spreadsheets outside of your current admins accounting system, which isn't really ideal. It creates a difficult process where you're relying on spreadsheets and really manual work and verbal communication to create the most important document you produce all year. And then the end result is static PDFs, spreadsheets that aren't really digestible for the average person, whether they be on the board or for a member of the public. And that's really where we come in. What we have designed is a cloud-based budget cycle management suite with a handful of different modules for each unique aspect of the budget processor, tools for making it easier to develop the budget with department heads, making it easier for the staff, the administrative staff, to actually develop the different stages of the budget, making it easier for board members to actually review the budget, and then actually putting the budget together. And the end result is going to be a budget document that looks something like this. So this here is actually the village of Tarrytown in Westchester County, not too far. This is their annual budget that's up on the website. Our software is designed to complement your admins accounting system. So we're not looking to change anything with the village's current systems, right? You're going to keep using admins for your general ledger, your accounts payable, your utility billing. What we're trying to do is digitize those spreadsheets that live outside of admins. And admins is a very popular accounting system. We have a lot of clients that use admins. We've actually already gone one step further. And our software has an admins interface within the product. So these two are compatible outside of the box. Our software is cloud-based. There's nothing the staff needs to do to support the software. It's all hosted on our servers via AWS, Amazon Web Services. It's the same servers that the FBI and Homeland Security are using, so financial security is built into the software. But really just want to hand this over. And this is the village's actual budget document that you can see here on the iPad. So our software again is going to make it so much easier for your team to construct the budget, right? Instead of having to sit down with department heads and verbally collect their department requests, they'll be able to directly enter not just their budget requests, but additional information, notes, attachments, itemized details. You as board members, you will not have to wait to be in village hall or at a board meeting to actually view the budget. You can at the leisure of, at your leisure, whether you're at home or on vacation, or whatever the case is, you can log in in a cloud-based environment and ask questions and review the budget in real time. And there's no making sure that this spreadsheet matches this PDF. Everything is in one integrated suite. When you make one change, the entire budget is updated. But the most kind of attractive aspect of the software for most communities like Wapungus Falls is the presentation of the budget. To have something that's digital and interactive, the fact that I can hand over an iPad and it's, it's pretty clean. It's going to automatically generate charts and graphs. And there's even an AI tool that can write budget narrative for you. So really making your budget document the most powerful policy tool and communications tool that you'd expect in 2025 as opposed to just a basic financial report that doesn't really tell a story. Set up for our software is pretty quick. It's at 60 to 90 days. It's something you can absolutely get up and running out of this next budget cycle for FY '26, '27 budget. That's our company in a nutshell. I'm happy to take any questions.
So you said something about department heads and how it would just basically take out the, not the communication of it, but the reason we just established department head meetings where so residents can know too? Is there a way that residents can access this as well? Like if a department heads needs certain closures or whatnot?
Sure. So there's a couple tabs open. The middle tab will actually pull up a department page. You'll look at the engineering department. This software is going to strengthen what you just described, right? We're looking to make it easier for you and your team to collect this data, house this data, and create a repeatable process, not just for today, but 10 years, 20 years, 30 years into the future. So those meetings can still take place. If anything, they're just going to have an outlet to get that information centralized. They'll have an outlet to include more information so that when you're actually doing these meetings, instead of that being the first time you're hearing this information, it's now more about, oh, you already have the data. You've already reviewed the data. Now it's more about analysis. It's more about talking about, you know, other things, right? It's freeing you up to do, again, more analysis and forward future planning. But that document we're looking at is up on the website. That's off Tarrytown's actual website. So it's entirely up to you whether you want to do in-person communication or make that digital communication. You'll just have more options.
And then just to follow up, is it easy, easy relative, being relative? Is it possible to integrate it into WordPress? Like that's what our system is for our website? I don't know how it would go about integrating all of that.
Yeah, our software would integrate onto your village's website. It'd be no different than how you have PDFs all over your village's website, which I've looked at earlier today. It'd be the same type of process to embed that. So really, well, I just want to underscore this point. We're really not trying to reinvent anything. What we're trying to do is take what you're doing already that's very manual and time-consuming, and to be candid, inefficient, and just really speed up the process. It's like, you know, still using a car, we're just trying to make that car run as efficiently as possible without actually changing.
What would the cost be roughly?
It's on a modular basis. Low end, it's about $6,000. If you're looking for kind of all the components to develop the budget and present, it's closer, I think, to $11,000 to $12,000.
Is there a maintenance, a yearly maintenance thing? Or is that, so you'd have to pay that same amount every year and that's a flat rate?
There'd be like a 3% cost of living increase with the software that would kick in after the, in the second full year, which would be June 1st, 2027.
Sounds reasonable. I'm just curious that there was a monthly payment toward now?
It's an annual, and there's always appropriations language. So, you know, if you lock in a five-year deal, think of it as like a one-year deal with 3% options.
Sounds like a good, good deal.
Our software is also endorsed by several organizations. In New York State, it's actually endorsed by the National, the New York State Association of Counties. A third of the New York counties are using our software. So we're also proud to have a lot of those validators as well.
As a manager, I worked for a major corporation, and each month we had to present plan versus actual with explanations to deltas. Will this system, if it goes over the budget, would it flag it somehow? Would there be a report or something would come out and say, oh, by the way, these lines have exceeded the allocation?
You're going to have a lot of analytics in the software. To be candid, we have a lot of modules, so candidly, you're not, you know.
So it's à la carte?
It's à la carte, but I think for even like a more basic subscription, which is what I would prescribe for a village of your size, you're not, you know, the city of Buffalo or the city of Boston, right? You don't maybe need all the bells and whistles. But even the basic bells and whistles are going to give you so much analytics around your data that you're going to feel like you have the same technology as the city of Boston, the same process. So short answer is yes. Just uploading your basic admins data into the system and leveraging the budget data you're creating, it's going to create highly powerful visuals. There'll be rule settings, right? If I don't want a department to do X, Y, and Z, you know, create caps and things like that, just creating more rules in place, you'll be able to do that. But the visuals are pretty powerful. I mean, our software just automatically, the way it presents the budget, is built around the GFOA, which is the Government Finance Officers Association. They have a budget award they give out every year. It's a very comprehensive list. Before our software came around, it was nearly impossible for a community of this size to win that award. And some of those things are talking about what you're talking about, and you'd have to do that analysis manually. We've built software to automate all this. We have communities of your size across the country winning these awards and doing those types of things because the way we built our software is it produces department reports and fund reports that show budget versus actuals and over-budgeted figures very, very cleanly, very, very easily, and very, very automated.
Well, I like the idea of POs, purchase orders. And the idea would be to have a manager like myself go into the treasurer and say, I'm going to go out and I need to buy a new computer for $4,000. And would be able to go onto the system, say, oh, tilt, you don't have $4,000 left in your account.
So, yeah, important distinction is that, and we don't pretend to be something we're not. We are a budget and financial reporting software company. So the budget is a forward-looking device. Our software is really, really powerful, and people are always stretching the limits with our software. We're constantly accommodating that. But at the end of the day, you have an accounting system to do the accounting side of the village's operations. And I'll be candid, admins gets the job done. I'm not looking to change that. What I'm trying to change is the way you plan forward. What is the budget and the spending and the revenues you're looking to do over the next 12 months? And to create better reports around that data, whether it be budget data or actual data, purchase orders, things like that, accounts payable, that's really not our wheelhouse. We're not looking to change that. Could you use our software to assist in analysis on that? Yes, is that what it's designed to do? Not really. It's really designed to make it easier to collaborate on the budget, again, the most important thing you're doing all year, and make it easier to present and understand that data.
Can I just go back to cost? Is there a monthly maintenance fee?
An annual subscription depending on the module. So it's a one-time annual. So you pay it for the 12 months following that payment, and it's based on the module. So the low end is about $5,000, $6,000. The higher end, I think, is $11,000, $12,000.
Just a one-time fee?
That, that cost is annual. There's an additional one-time setup cost. It's like $2,000 or $3,000. But in that first year, we would prorate the cost of this software. You're already in the middle of your fiscal year. By the time you get up and running, you're halfway through the year. So that setup cost kind of gets washed out.
So there's an initial cost, an additional initial cost to setting it up? And then from then on in, it would be whatever we chose, anywhere from $6,000 to $12,000.
Yes, first year is a one-time setup cost and a prorated annual cost. Each following year is just the annual cost.
With a 3% cost of living increase.
That would break in the second full year.
If this system was used over a multitude of years, would it show if we were doing something in budget that was not going to work? In other words, numbers, would it track numbers? It would do that?
Yeah, I mean, you can back up however much historical data you want in the software. I mean, I was talking with Greg. I know there's been some changes in the way maybe data has been built and structured historically. Our software we provide is part of the onboarding, a data onboarding consultant who's a former government finance official. And they're going to help you think about maybe different ways to view your data. We can also unify the data because it's going into our system, built on the way admins talks. But it's in our system, which, to be candid, is our proprietary tool. It just gives you more flexibility to structure your data. So yes, you're going to get a lot more analysis on the data you've already built, and the more data you build. Let me give you an example of what we're talking about. Let's say there is an account for software subscriptions. That account is $100,000 a year, right? So at the beginning of this upcoming budget cycle for 2026, right? I'm assuming at one, at some point, someone's going to talk to someone on staff and be like, what should we budget for that? They're going to say, I need to spend X amount of money on that account for software in 2026. Here's where we think we're going to end the year in 2025. That's your normal process right now. I don't have a lot of detail. With our system, you get all that, plus we can go back however many years to see where we actually budgeted versus what we actually spent. In their 26 requests, they can say, oh, that $100,000, X amount's going to admins, X amount's going to ClearGov, X amount's going to ADP, and see that level of detail. And within our system, you can also do 10 years of forecasting on top of the 20, of the, of the budget you're planning for. So $100,000 for software subscriptions in 2026 with it all itemized out. But then it'll be 3% in the following year, 5% in the following year, 6% in the following year. And you can really get a good picture of where you're trying to go three, five years down in the future. That level of detail, whether it's staff, staff salaries, insurance costs, conference attendance, right? I mean, office supplies, to be able to build your budget down to the penny and also give you the ability to forecast around that data. When you're making decisions in that annual vacuum, you're mostly viewing it from a one-year perspective. But that's going to affect your costs every year in the future, especially if it's personnel-related. So getting a better picture as you're making those decisions with the analytics, how is this decision today going to impact the tax rate three years from now? That's the level of data you're going to get in the software.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Next item, regular session. Approval for the mayor to sign the MOA to hire Peter Giustino as a full-time police officer.
You get a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Resolution 3325, 2025, hiring of Brennan Ortiz as part-time water clerk.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to table that to executive session.
Table to the executive session. You second? All in favor?
Opposed?
Aye.
I'm opposed. Let's do this again.
Roll call.
Roll call?
Roll call. Mayor Huber.
I say we table it.
Table it.
Trustee Semento.
I'm ready to vote on it.
Trustee Mosh.
No.
Trustee Vanke.
I vote to table it.
Trustee Smith.
No.
We got four noes.
Skin tabled?
Yep.
Tabled. Okay. Call of election. Resolution by the Village Board of Trustees of the Village of Wapungus Falls, New York as follows. Section 1, that pursuant to Section 504 of the election law, the general village election of and for said village will be held on the 18th day of March, 2026, and that the polls shall be open for voting between the hours of 10:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. Section 2, that said village has been divided into three election wards, and that description of said wards, together with the polling place, for each ward is as follows. Ward 1, all that portion of said village lying north and west of the Wapungus Creek. The polling place in Ward 1 is the Village Hall 2582 South Avenue. Election Ward 2, election ward 2 is comprised of all that portion of said village generally bounded as follows. On the south, by the village boundary line. On the north, by East Main Street. On the east, by South Avenue. And by the west, the Wapungus Creek. And the polling place is Village Hall 2582 South Avenue. Election Ward number 3, all that portion of village lying outside the two wards above described. The polling place is 2582 South Avenue Village. Section 4, this resolution shall take effect immediately. John M. Karge, certified municipal clerk, registered municipal clerk, chief election officer, and village clerk. And I have a motion to accept that resolution.
John, I have a question first. I'm not sure if this is the right time or during, or what we're doing. But I know that the board has expressed, or majority of the board has expressed, requesting that the county come down with the machines to cover this next election because of all the problems the last election had.
Yeah, we've had machines in the past.
Yeah, can, now, does that, is that something that we have to address now? Or is it something that can?
Well, we have time. I have an obligation to get this out.
No, I understand. That's why I'm not sure when it would be a good time to.
Machines are fine as long as you budget for them. They're very expensive and you have to use their folks.
Right, I know.
I can find out what that cost is.
I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You get a motion on the resolution?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Just a reminder that three wards are going to have their elections here. By the way, for those who don't know, the village holds three elections per year and are all on the same day. Each ward holds their own election for their trustee. They don't get a say in the other two wards. Every two years, which would be not '26, but in '27, there's a mayor race. That is running at large among the three. Every four years, there's a justice on the ballot. That's every four years, and that goes at large across all three. This is, this one is for trustees. Okay. Resolution designating offices to be filled at the next general election and the terms thereof. Be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Wapungus Falls as follows. That pursuant to subdivision 15104 of the election law, this board does hereby designate the offices to be filled at the general election on March 18th, 2026, and the respective terms of each office. Trustee, first ward, two years. Trustee, second ward, two years. Trustee, third ward, two years. Can I have a motion to accept that resolution?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Okay. I will try to get that information to you, to the board quickly.
Thank you. Thank you, John.
All right, curfew. October 8th, today, the curfew, we're going to ask for approval. By executive order of the mayor of the Village of Wapungus Falls, please be advised that during the evening hours of October 30th, 2025, through November 1st, 2025, between the hours of 9:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m. the following day, it shall be unlawful for any minor to congregate, loiter, wander, remain, or play in upon any public, public place, public park, public area, street, road, or highway in the village. The terms remain, and loiter mean linger or stay, or fail to leave premises when requested to do so by a police officer, owner, operator, or other person in control of the premises. B, minor, means under the age of 18 years old. Can I have a motion to approve the executive order?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Discussion, discussing changing the weight limits of village streets. Trustee Semento.
So as you all know, we've gotten several complaints about enforcing the weight limit. Right now, as it stands, the weight limit in the code is 7,500 pounds. Right now, as it stands, the weight limit in the code is 7,500 pounds, which includes heavy-duty trucks, like pickup trucks. So we're looking to increase that to around probably within the territory of 12,000 around. 10,000 is commercial motor vehicles under DOT, that classifies them. 18,000 is the New York State heavy truck restriction cutoff. And then 26,000 is CDL territory. Changing these will do one thing, enforcement is another, but just so that way pickup trucks aren't caught for this weight limit. You know, you understand what I'm saying? So I don't know if anyone would like to add on to that.
Do we not already have weight limits to this village now?
We have the weight limits, but.
Some pickup trucks.
Pickup trucks will exceed those weight limits.
This one, this sign says 6,000 pounds, that's coming into the village, which, yes. Okay.
Yeah, that is, that's not accurate in the code. I believe that was.
7,500.
7,500 is on the code specifically. I mean, there's different weight limits for different roads.
Yep.
This one is looking at East Main for 7,500 pounds. And I know there's been a lot of issues with heavy trucks going by, even on South Ave, but that's state road. So we're just looking at changing that. I'll have more numbers next meeting, but I just wanted to bring that up, let all of you all know that that's something we're looking into.
All right.
If anyone has any questions, concerns.
Okay. Discussion, Gold Star Way, DPW, Commissioner Nicholas.
So this came up after the collapse above, above the municipal parking lot. And when, after our guys fixed it, they put in for CHIPS money. We found out it wasn't listed in our registry that we owned the road. So we never got CHIPS money. And we do a yearly update on our roads. And I was going to add it to the list, but according to the county code, I need a resolution to do that. And I want to read what it says. Please submit a resolution from the municipality or county legislative body stating that an entity holds a legal and maintenance responsibility for the road or roads. And I started thinking, I think this came up once before, and we weren't sure that we actually owned that road. And I'm sitting here thinking, because I want to say I was a trustee, we talked about this. And I don't ever remember voting on it, and I don't, and I think that was the reason why. So if we want to add it, maybe first step should be, if you would like me to work with you, to find out if we legally own it and then come back. But I was just sitting here thinking about that. When I was mentioning it, it's like, we don't know that we legally own it, so I don't want to say that we do.
Yeah, I would recommend working.
With Ian to find out.
Okay. Shame that he just left.
Yeah, well.
That's fine. I can work with him. But I was actually coming today to try to get the resolution, and the more I read this and more, read the wording, it's like, it's ringing a bell that we went down this road, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
That we went before, and we got hung up on that one issue. So I'll, I'll, I'll work with Ian on it.
Okay.
Sounds like a plan.
At the next meeting, I have a motion for you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Approval, VFW Coin Drop, November 8th and 9th, 2025, and also May 23rd and 24th, 2026, at the Dela Verne Avenue in West Maine.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry.
Approval, appointing Richard Travis as court attendant. It's a volunteer position without compensation.
Make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry.
Accept resignation of Charles Rizzo, groundskeeper, effective this Friday, the 10th.
You get a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry.
I'm in receipt of correspondence from William T. Garner that they approved a new active member, Christopher Calamari. Can I have a motion to accept that correspondence?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry.
Mayor and board, that concludes the printed portion of the agenda.
Anybody have anything?
Uh, yes. The head of the Historical Society, Beth Devine, would like to secure a date for the boathouse on June 19th, 2026, for the gala that she held this year. She just needs a date confirmed by the board, if that's okay with us, so she can lock in the caterer, and she'll provide us, again, with all the proper licenses and insurances.
Board out.
Did you check that?
Cleaning deposit this time?
Sorry?
You're going to accept the cleaning deposit this time?
Cleaning deposit. Remember, we went through the $800 charge for the cleaning afterwards?
So should we say that the cleaning is all on them?
The cleaning is on them.
Okay. Then it comes out of their pocket for cleaning them.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
So.
And I believe, was there something that we needed for them last time that we did not get that the attorney said we should have had?
We got all of them on the, literally, we got all of them on the final hour.
Okay.
But this time, she will book it in advance. They're in contact with that, same catering company.
Yeah, as long as we get all the information ahead of time and give it to, to our attorney?
Yeah, that.
Yeah.
Yes.
Just so we're not liable.
She's booked, once, once we book that up, then she'll send it over all the proper insurances from the ca, and I'm in contact with the caterer too.
Okay.
They have my contact, so they can send it to me, but I can.
Okay.
I'll forward it to Ian, obviously.
She sent us an email.
Yes.